Call the meeting order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Sue.
President.
Mr. Bernhardt is absent. Mr. Delia?
Here.
Mr. Newport here.
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 Mr. Sullivan is absent. Mr. Youngblood?
Here.
Notice that this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News, Courier-News, and Star-Ledger filed with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on January 5th, 2017. Please all rise for the pleasure of the evening. Ledger leadens.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seeing that we have no presentations, folks, please. I'll move on to approval of minutes. August 14th, 2017, Mr. Brown was absent. September 11th, 2017, Mr. Brown was absent. Anybody have comments on the minutes or any considerations or changes?
No.
All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. D. Cortier.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Peter Brown abstaining.
I'm here.
And, all right. Open session at this point in the meeting. The mayor and council welcome comments from any member of the public to help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard. Speakers shall limit their comments to five minutes. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy, an email copy to the clerk's office after making your comments so maybe we properly reflect it in a minute. Cheryl, you want?
Okay. Cheryl Frantin, Recreation Director, Department of Public Health. Also a resident of Hyatt Avenue. My one reason I'm here is, I believe as of right now, Hyatt Avenue is complete. Is that right, Kathy? And I just want to thank, you know, a lot of employees here. I see them out there six in the morning. And I just, you know, thank you, council, Hyatt Avenue. You know, Belgium Block David looks beautiful.
Thank you.
And to the employees who work so hard there. I also just want to invite the council, it kind of, you know, started pretty rapidly. While back, the mayor suggested that, you know, maybe we could do another fishing derby. We have done a few in the past and it's, we are doing one on Saturday and it's growing exponentially. It's really awesome. We just today, Neil and I in the office hooked up with the Great Swamp and they have a trailer that's a 10 by 15 trailer, I believe. It's brand new. They got it through grant money from the counties. I believe it's county grant money. And they've offered to us, it's stocked with about, it's, it's, it's brand new. It's beautiful. Stocked with about 30 fishing poles, fishing vests, nets, board to measure our fish on when the kids catch them because the kids will have, get trophies for different ages and so on. But it's beautiful. It's a beautiful event and the...
And Christine, you recommended that trailer.
Yes, she did.
You know, at the last minute here and we really saved the day.
Yes.
So it worked out well.
It was a great deal.
We were thinking forward about how we were going to wait fish and everything else.
Exactly. They also offered it to us on the 21st, which is pre-fishing day, but unfortunately I believe that's the day to hunt. So to have another event out here, I think it'd be a little rough. So I don't think we're going to be doing anything that day, but they have other great programming also. So I just want to invite you all on Saturday. I'm not going to tell you when this party's going to be stocked. That's the secret. So, but as of Saturday, everyone can start fishing and it'll be a great event. But thank you.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else for something that's not on the agenda, Terry?
Not for me.
You don't see how popular you are.
Yeah, right. I just wanted to thank you for going ahead and having, getting an ordinance here to introduce, to reallocate some of the library parking spaces out on, out near the high school, toward high school students. I know that's going to make Franny's life a lot easier in the next month or so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for an item not on the agenda?
We don't need a license for any of those fishing.
No, it's our property. We're stopping it. Yes, all right. Christine?
I'm just worried about this.
Adults need to have a license?
We're, it's children.
It's only kids, correct?
Yes.
Good. Thank God.
Yes.
Christine Zamara, 28, Anderson. I'm here to ask about the Claremont Clubhouse again. This came up a few meetings ago and what I have come up with is a plan for a group of parent volunteers who would like to paint and clean out the Claremont Clubhouse. So the plan would consist of every weekend between November or as soon as you let us start to February. Hopefully it wouldn't take that long, but just planning for the unknown. And the donation has come in from the Burnsville Hardware Store to supply us with paint and supplies. We're also working on someone to supply a dumpster or some type of removal of debris if needed.
All right.
And we're just asking for permission to proceed with the project.
All right. So Jack, legally, what would we have to do?
Insurance.
Yeah, I think the JIP requires a list of those volunteers that are going to participate.
They're all residents.
They have to be insured, correct?
Well, I think the JIP, the volunteers will not require separate insurance necessarily, but they do require a list. Same as, and, you know, so we had to get it cert. I guess probably have to, we have identified ones on, on, on.
There's no limitations on ages or anything else, that type of thing? Because I remember the Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts wanted to do some bleachers and we couldn't do it.
That's right. So we better check with the, the risk manager.
It's all adults over 18.
Okay.
Okay.
I put it in. Got you.
Doug, I would just make sure Doug's aware from a facility standpoint, just to make sure he's not doing something different that he may have something already in the works, so.
And Doug, you have anything going on with the Claremont Fieldhouse or? No? Okay, so.
But Doug, you have like, you know what needs to be done. You have some plans to sort of spec the whole thing out, didn't you at some point?
I'm not sure what Christine was planning on working on.
Yeah, so you ought to at least talk because Doug had sort of investigated rather than earlier.
But you can get together and give us a list of the volunteers at the next meeting and there's supplies coming from...
Well, I can email that to you before the next meeting.
Sure. And email it to the clerk's office and we'll get it to our attorney and we'll raise it up.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Good. Billy?
Thank you very much. I think we need feedback from Doug and then we'll...
Sure. Okay. And we'll have it on the next meeting agenda.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else from the public, something not on the agenda?
Tell people that they can sit in the fronts that are standing at the hall.
What?
Tell people that they can sit in the fronts that are standing at the hall.
You want to come in? Everybody has plenty of seats up here.
It's not a big deal. It is a big deal.
Well, what is?
I just want to thank you for repairing that horse trough that I've looked at for 40 years, that since the horse and buggy stopped, it's been in distance there.
Thank you.
And let the town look better.
And the Claremont steps, are you pleased with those?
Oh, the Claremont steps are great.
So you like going on here.
And the train station's next?
I mean, it goes on.
I know we're packed on your taxes.
It's really good.
And we'll, we'll include, you know, the Friends and Garden Club with the, we'll include the Friends of Greener Burnsville and the Garden Club with the plantings.
Oh, yes.
So, we'll, we'll get together and discuss that.
Friends of Greener Burnsville are definitely going to get their foot into the planting.
Very good. All right. Thanks, Ann. Thank you. Anyone else? Item not on the agenda. Council members, anything?
We're on the agenda, but...
Oh, you're on the agenda.
You want to? Go ahead.
Bill's giving you the signal. Actually, this is about the H-PAC and Friends of Historic Burnsville have put together a brochure and we've scheduled a historic downtown walking tour.
Everybody should have a copy.
Everybody has a copy. It's October 8th. It is free to the public. We will also be handing out booklets that look like this. This is Alcott Avenue, but contain this information. So I have one colored copy for you guys and then black and white ones.
Thank you.
So you can read them and we're, I'm here to actually invite you all, at least come.
Thank you very much. That's on the last one. Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Dan.
It's actually quite entertaining.
Thank you, Dan.
You'll be glad to know there's a little less architecture, a little more who lived where, whatever.
Sit down. Where's this?
That is the, Alcott Square.
Yeah, but where's this?
Oh, that was removed.
Can we fund this? This is awesome.
You're suggesting me go back?
I could probably find somebody who makes stuff like that.
Right. So for, for the record, so those that don't see this, it's Saturday, October the 8th, right?
That's correct.
Or is it a Sunday? Sunday.
Sunday. We wanted to do Sunday because we figured there would be less traffic.
Less traffic.
And frankly, at the Alcott Avenue walking tour, we had 70 people show up and each of us can handle that 35 people, but we're promoting this a lot more. It's going to be in the paper, the library, there's flyers all around town. So if we get like 100 people, we will split it into three groups and we will have like a microphone speaker, you know, portable speaker, so.
And chief, we will check in just to make sure, you know, so you know times and everything else.
I gave this copy.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Dan, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Item not on the agenda. Good? All right. So I'm going to close the open session and move on to ordinances. All right. I'm going to continue a public hearing for the August 14th meeting on ordinance 171745 adopting well testing regulations and amending supplementing chapter 14 of the land development regulations entitled environmental regulations. I'm going to open the public hearing. So anybody from the public? Joanna?
First of all, I would like to say that if it was at all possible, you would imagine that we would want a full staff, a full membership, if it could be postponed, because a lot of people have put a lot of work into this and it would be nice to have the entire regular membership who have been listening to vote on that. So I don't know what the procedure is, if you can vote on that, postpone it or not.
Yeah, the council would have to vote on that.
Yes.
If they wanted to postpone or table it at this meeting. So that would be a motion from the council.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have a statement.
Sure. Go ahead.
It's not.
Yes.
It's about the...
That's fine.
Okay. This page, okay. I'd like this opportunity to persuade all of the council members to pass the aquifer testing well ordinance because we believe it is necessary and the correct thing to do. I'm sorry if Nina was in your environment question. Your environmental commission takes the charge of protecting our natural resources very seriously, especially the quantity and quality of our water. We've known about this, these concerns of water deficit in our area for many years and we've been pursuing this ordinance for six years. If you are concerned about the science related to the need of this ordinance, this is what I know. There is a combination of geographic and geological factors that inhibit recharge groundwater and its acquisition for domestic wells in the mountain area of our borough, such as there is no natural or man-made reservoirs to supply water to the mountain area of Burnsville. It therefore depends on precipitation for its recharge of its aquifers. The mountain area has many slopes, some steep, and because of this topography, rain and surface water builds velocity heading down the valleys, many to the streams, which then discharge this water out of the area and therefore reduces absorption and recharge. Soil types influence water absorption. Sandy porous soils are better than clay for absorption, although variable, the soil in the mountain area has clay content in many of the unsaturated parts of the zone. Underground geological formation influences the ability of an aquifer to recharge and also determines its mobility, its direction, and length. Granite is less permeable than sandstone and limestone. Burnsville Mountain gets its well water primarily from fractured granite. Because of this particular geology, it is difficult to map precisely where the granite features that hold water are and to know how the aquifers travel. Therefore, drilling locations, depth, and GPM are variable, gallons per minute. I have confidence in saying that I believe any qualified reputable hydrologist or geologist would agree that there is some risk that a newly drilled well can have negative effects on the established neighboring wells. The rub seems to be what is the number of residents who have experienced compromised wells? I don't mean pump or leaking pipes. That's very common. Without this well testing, how is it possible to prove the comparison, the compromise rather, or failure of a well is caused by the down, the drawdown of new neighboring wells? Well drilling permits do not adequately give enough information to make any sound conclusions. More importantly, what is the number that would satisfy agreement of need and the justification of a well test ordinance? I have not heard any. I want to state clearly that the rumor that the environmental commissioners are against development is untrue. We do not believe that development and taking measures to protect the environment are diametrically opposed. That's why we attend Smart Growth Workshops, capital S, capital G, and we integrate best management practices in our comments for our site evaluations. We do not favor any district in the borough or have special interests other than those we state clearly.
Turn you up. No more minute, okay? I don't want to interrupt you.
Okay. I have just, I'll, I'll re-read it super fast.
Thank you.
Cost has been, although I can hand this to somebody else for their five minutes.
Sure. I just want to get a little bit of a chance to speak tonight. Thank you.
Cost has been another issue. In my opinion, cost for this procedure will not be a deterrent factor to contractors or buyers. There are many positive reasons for people to be attracted to live in Burnsville. Buyers of these properties may be happy to know they are not causing hardship to their neighbors and they may appreciate that they too will receive the same protection of their water. I believe without this ordinance, the existing residents would have the total burden of remediation of any negative impacts of quantity or quality of their water, which results from any new development, well interference. Finally, ordinance are, ordinances are for now and the future. I think it could be agreed that impervious surfaces will increase, minor or not, and tree canopies will continue to decrease. We don't know the frequency, the duration, or the intensity of future droughts. We need to be mindful of our water resources now. In conclusion, I would like to read a direct quote from our master plan. Its purpose is to protect borough residents and their property from negative environmental, financial, and other impacts of development. I want to thank the professionals who thoughtfully researched and tweaked this ordinance for its legality, clarity of concept, process, and wording. Thank you, Mr. Brightley, Mr. Zimmerman, and Mr. Pidgen. I'd like to thank the planning board for hiring Tom Dwyer, an outstanding hydrologist, for his outstanding professional knowledge of this ordinance, experience and its, with its testing procedures and the guidance he's given to drafting this ordinance. The planning board deserves an expression of appreciation for their efforts in crafting this ordinance to specifically meet the needs of Burnsville. Very special thanks go to Bob Graham for his great ability to find compromises and to incorporate with reason and fairness the goal of the environmental commission and the personal positions of the planning board members and members of this council. Thanks are due to the council members for their attention and their meaningful questions. I think it is fair to say that the environmental commission has done all they can to promote the passing of this ordinance. The weight of the outcome is entirely up to the vote of the members of this council. I hope you vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, before you start speaking, there's three seats up here if anybody wants to sit down. It's going to be a long night, so you might as well sit there. Yes. How you doing?
Hello, members of the council. Mayor Suey. I'm Kristi McDonald. I am the science director at Raridan Headwaters. I'm a resident of Burnsville and I'm also on the environmental commission in Burnsville. I really, Johanna covered things so thoroughly. I don't have so much more to add except to say a couple of things about what we presented in the past to the council. For anyone who's new here tonight and maybe doesn't know a lot about the aquifer ordinance, there are some familiar pieces here, though. The aquifer ordinance is a common sense ordinance. It's a tool for the municipality to have in place before a problem happens with water. In the case of developments of five or more homes, there would be a requirement that the developer would have to test to make sure there's enough water in the ground for the homes that are going in and that the new wells would not interfere with existing wells in surrounding properties. So the, the aquifer ordinance is basically being put in place because we live in a municipality where we're all drinking water from the ground, from aquifers in the ground. About half the municipality is drinking from the municipal wells and the other half approximately is drinking from private wells. The private well owners are, would be responsible if they did run out of water at this point because we don't have protections in place. The ordinance is backed up and the need for the ordinance is backed up by the fact that we have a fractured bedrock aquifer system here. So it's variable spatially. You could have lots of cracks in one place with water and then you just move a few hundred feet away and it might be different. The only way to know that is to do a study. And we're just basically saying the onus of the study should be on the person who's going to do the development. We feel that the cost of the, the testing will be incurred, you know, by the cost of the homes when they're bought and that it's, it's so important to protect the drinking water supply of the existing residents that that's something that's necessary to have in place. And we fully feel that it's something that would be negligible compared to the cost of the houses that are being built in our municipality. We've presented evidence that there have already been people with water problems and we did account for the fact, we asked them specifically, is it because you've had pump failure? We had people tell us, no, we did not have pump failure. We ran out of water. So we don't know the reason exactly why, but it could be because, you know, there's just lower water supplies in certain areas in the municipality. We had data from Stoudoff's when they drilled wells showing that some wells were producing five gallons per minute and some were producing 500. We gave all this data to you, so I'm not going to go through all of that tonight. I'm just reminding you of some of the things that we're aware of. The Highlands, who has some of the best available data on recharge of the aquifers in this region, the Highlands Council has presented data showing that there is a deficit in some of the areas on the mountain in recharge. So this is a, an ordinance that would provide protections that would require testing in the case of a major subdivision. Minor subdivisions, less than five homes, wouldn't actually be covered by this ordinance. So it really applies mostly, at least to the pump, the level that they need to do pump tests, applies to major subdivisions. And, you know, the environmental commission, Raridan Headwaters, fully supports municipalities putting in place these protections. There are at least 16 municipalities in Hunterdon and several other counties in this region that already have ordinances and I'm sure more will follow. Just because we don't have one or the next town over doesn't have one, doesn't mean it's not a good ordinance. It just means nobody wanted to put in the years and years of work it takes to pass an ordinance, as we've seen in this process. And I want to say thank you too for everyone who's participated. The citizens of the municipality, as soon as they learned of this and realized what was happening, they really came together. The planning board spent a lot of time revising the original draft ordinance we gave them. They made some very good changes. We've had two expert hydrogeologists work on this ordinance. We paid for them to come and do that. The environmental commission paid, the municipality, the planning board paid. So a lot has gone into this and we're hoping that tonight you're going to make the right choice of, of voting in favor of the ordinance to protect our citizens' water supply. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. Anyone else want to speak?
Hi. I just want to thank you all so much for all the time and, and meetings and discussions that you've given for us to present the ordinance. Also, as Terry knows, the planning board hasn't gone bonkers with this. They've spent hours revising it and it's no question in my mind that it's a much better ordinance today than it was when it started, when we started on that six years ago in May. And I applaud what Christie said and I, so there's one thing that I also want to say that I don't know if a lot of people realize, that every drop of water that comes out of a tap in Burnsville, anybody's tap, mountain, everywhere, and it comes from the aquifer. There are no reservoirs in Burnsville. The water company, the public water also comes from their aquifer access. It's all aquifers. So there's no, public water isn't being piped in from somewhere else. So I just think it's really important to keep an eye on the water supply. And as Christie said, we've all put so much time into this and we just, I would like you just, if you don't think it's the most perfect ordinance, if you would just consider having the tool as a tool in the planner's hand box. It's there if we ever need it. We may hardly ever need it, but it's there. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Christine? She just beat your shirt to her hand up.
Christine Zamara, 28, Anderson. I agree with what everyone said. I just want to add, the fishing derby, that's a great way to teach our kids about the cleanliness and protecting the water and that's what that tractor full of fishing equipment is about from Great Swamp. They are active and wanting people to learn about how important it is to protect the water and that's why they provide the fishing equipment for free and they want to get the word out about protecting the water. So if you want to have fishing derbies, fun, 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 you got to protect the water. Thank you.
Sherry Farley, Cary Chouse Road. Fun, fun, fun. Can't do it, but that's a great thing and we should all remember how very precious water is. I can't take credit for this latest tremendous, tremendous, incredible push and effort, but I have to say that I have never been around such a devoted group of people, such a knowledgeable group of people. And you guys are probably not aware yourselves of over this long haul, how far you've come on this. Look what we've all learned. And if there's something we don't know now, or that we don't know now, that we know now and we will know more in the future, is we can't make more water. Nature makes the water, takes it away, gives us too much, gives us too little, and water's the new oil. And it's almost trite, but it's worth remembering and we would really appreciate your support on this. It is a tool to be called out. If it's not in place, it can't be used. It is not a cudgel. It is not a threat. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Trying to talk into this. My name is Bill Kebler. I'm the director of policy for the Raridan Headwaters Association. And with your permission, for just a moment, I need a little bit of audience participation. So if you're from town and you get your drinking water from a well, and I know you guys know how to do this already because I saw most of you do it tonight, do me a favor and stand up. If you, if you live in town and you get your water from a well, stand up. If you live in town... If you live in town and you get your water from a well, you better be standing. Okay. Thank you very much. These are the folks that voted for you all, okay? These are the folks, these are your constituents here. I'm here to encourage you to adopt this ordinance tonight. This is an excellent ordinance and it's an opportunity for you all as the leaders of this community to demonstrate leadership, not just in your community, but in the region as well. I imagine in the past Kristi and some others may have mentioned this to you, the issue of stressed groundwater aquifers is not a local issue for you. Now, for you, the people living in Burnsville, obviously this is a local issue. I understand that. But you're not alone with this issue. In the Highlands, there are 183 subwatersheds. They're called Act 14, so we won't get into that, it doesn't matter. 183 subwatersheds. Of those 183 subwatersheds, 114 of them are in deficit. Do you see that deficit every day? No, you don't see it here in your town every day. What that means is that in a worst-case scenario, and you're not gonna see it now, which you may very well have seen it a year ago when we were in drought, in a worst-case scenario, that sub watershed doesn't generate enough water to meet the needs of the people and the environment in that watershed, in that sub watershed. This is an opportunity for you all as leaders of your community to lead in the way that physicians do. And one of the first rules of physicians is first, do no harm. This ordinance is an excellent opportunity to make sure the new development first, won't do harm. It won't do harm to your constituents that live here today and it will make sure that those developments don't do harm to the constituents that are gonna move into them. Either because they're gonna impact the wells of your constituents who are living in your community today, or because it's gonna leave the folks that move into town without adequate water to take care of their own families. As Kristi mentioned, there are a number of communities here in our watershed that have already adopted similar ordinances. There are a number of communities that have adopted or are looking to adopt these ordinances throughout the state because in certain parts of the state, groundwater is critical. Our watershed is 470 square miles, Morris, Hunterdon, Somerset Counties. We are home to the largest and the third largest reservoirs in the state of New Jersey. That's Round Valley and Spruce Run. None of that water goes to our watershed. You all aren't drinking the water out of the reservoirs, you're drinking groundwater. Eighty percent of the people that live in our watershed, just like your community, rely on groundwater. That's a little unusual. The urban areas rely on the surface water. Out here, we rely on the groundwater. So, you'll see a similar pattern as you get down in the South Jersey where they also rely on groundwater. You'll see a number of communities down there that have also adopted similar ordinances. So, that was it. That's all I wanted to bring to you. I want to encourage you to adopt this ordinance tonight. I think it's an excellent opportunity for you all to demonstrate real leadership and for your community to ensure that their future, their drinking water, their future is secure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir. How you doing?
Jonathan Goodleman, Sixth Somerset Avenue. Live in Burnsville. First of all, I want to appreciate, you know, say a thank you guys to, for attending all these meetings and being on the board. I know it's not easy. I know it's a lot of work. I'm sure a lot of people can't do everything that you do, but just sort of a comment, you know, from coming to the meetings about the aquifer. I've heard that the Environmental Commission hired somebody that recommended the ordinance. I've heard that the town has recommended, has hired somebody that has recommended the ordinance. And I really haven't heard anything, any evidence to not pass the ordinance. So, you know, I just kinda second everything that everyone else said and just wanted to pass along that comment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir. Yes.
Hello, my name is Nancy McClure and I live on 9 Bodnar Street. We, we are lucky that at least we have one of the public wells, but I've listened to everything everybody has said tonight and they've said just wonderful things. And we all know how we all depend on water. And I'm wondering, who would not be in favor of this ordinance? I think this is... Thank you. We, the citizens of Burnsville, want to assure, be assured that we will always have enough water, enough good water. And throughout the country, we hear all the news about people who are having to drink bad water. We're lucky to have it here and I hope it will continue. And I urge the members of the Borough Council who are, respect for all the work you do, but please consider this for the citizens instead of developers. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Cindy Aronclu and I am associated with Raritan Headwaters. And my esteemed colleague has said a lot, so I will just come as a citizen and ask you all to find the courage to do the right thing. This is a very important ordinance and a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. And as a citizen, I ask that you listen carefully and do the right thing and vote yes for this ordinance. Thank you.
I don't know, your hands must be getting shorter. Clapping's getting shorter here, so. Anyone else from the public? Going once, going twice? Council members, any comments?
I guess in the interest of all this, the, and since we've carried this so many times before, mostly because I was away for a wedding and, on vacation, which people actually do, I note that Mr. Sullivan was called away last minute and perhaps we should carry this for the next meeting when hopefully everybody will be here next meeting?
That'll be up to the council if they want to carry it. On a recommendation from Peter.
I don't want to carry it.
You don't want to carry it, Mrs. Leo?
Peter, I'm not sure I'm here next meeting.
Okay, Billy might not be here next meeting.
Possibly push it to November, but I'm definitely in terms of, well, the first meeting in October, I'm not gonna be. Guess we do.
He said he's not too sure if he's gonna be here.
No, Peter asked if anybody was gonna miss a meeting. I don't think I'm gonna be at the next meeting. I'm not sure. That's really up, so.
Okay. But I'm just asking the council members, Peter made a recommendation, so. Michael, Chris, anything? Oh, you want to vote, Chris? You want to vote? Okay. And you're not too sure if you're gonna be here next meeting, so. And Jeff, you want to vote tonight, right?
Yeah, let's vote.
Okay. All right, Peter, anything else?
Yeah, anybody else have any comments?
Well, I know we've spent a lot of time, a lot of volunteer efforts by the Environmental Commission, our planning boards, all our volunteers, a lot of resources, a lot of review by the attorneys and professionals, hiring professionals. And I'll just, I'm going to recognize now I'm in favor at this point. But I appreciate all the time everyone's spent, whether it passes or not this evening. I have the crystal ball, so I don't know if it's gonna pass on the vote. But I appreciate all the time the Environmental Commission, all our volunteers have spent on this and the council members have participated in the matter. Anyone else have anything to say?
A question for Ralph.
Yes.
Ralph's been going on for, I was on the Environmental Commission as a liaison for two years and we had the first consultant and then we had the second one after the planning board won more information and with Jack Stein, I think, Planning Board Council. How much do you think we've actually spent on this? And presumably we've all allowed this to proceed out of good prudence and in the interest of the public because that is part of what we think it involves.
Not having looked at those numbers, certainly most recently, it was certainly being thousands of dollars.
Tens of thousands or thousands?
I don't know, they were spent out in the hundreds, thousands. Jack Stein, consultants, comments are highly paid individuals, so.
And all of our professionals who've been on all these meetings, we've had many, many meetings and it all started when people wanted more information. And it's important for people to have good information, information that they feel they can use to adequately make the decisions that they have to make because sometimes they have an impact that isn't as easy to act on as we all wish. But presumably, since we're all here in the best interest of the public and allocating these funds in the best interest of the public, all this proceeding over, I believe, three or four years before I even became involved, two years ago, hopefully this is all proceeding out of the best efforts to do the right thing. I'd like to say that, you know, we all take that oath of office and are very, have to be very careful about representing the interests of the public. And this is not a final, once and done type of process. We always have the ability to go back and make changes to ordinances. Some ordinances are very complicated, some ordinances have, the way they're drafted, they have unintended consequences. And in the many years that I've served as a appointed or elected official, these things do happen. The world doesn't stay still. Things change and certainly when the aquifer was formed, tens or hundreds of thousands of years ago, the amount of activity happening above that aquifer has changed. And therefore, while the aquifer doesn't change itself, the ability for water and things to get into the aquifer clearly has changed. Just look at some of the flooding events we've had in our area, not to mention our subcontinent because of surface disturbances. Initially, when this came through a couple of years ago, there were calls for more information, better data, there's insufficient data. And I think the planning, the, where the Environmental Commission went forward and did a survey to get whatever possible data there was. They tapped every resource in the state and various other nonprofit groups for the kind of information they would have. And of course, it's learned that there is no data tracking because it's not required. And the survey was the best effort to come up with something that at least gave an indication of what activity's been going on in the last 10 or 15 years in terms of people adding new wells, redeveloping wells, and so on and so forth. And it was found that a very substantial number had mentioned either contamination, not enough water, or whatever. Now, I don't think anyone's ever said that the hill's going dry, the town is going dry. That's absolutely not what's going on. Some people are using a lot more than might be known because there's no need to report how water is used unless you're a commercial facility, you're drawing more than 100,000 gallons a day. Golf courses and things like that, water supply, utilities, those kinds of things. Sub industries, but not individual public well. So, there's no way to know how much is going out, but we do know from state data and many of the testimony that we have that it's easy to have a deficit and certainly parts of town, we definitely do have a deficit. All in all, it doesn't even out, but you know, there are reasons for concern. I've also heard that people were not convinced and there's only 700 and something. Karen Peggy, you're on the planning board. How many households are individually, individual wells versus a town well? Is it 720, 30? I don't remember the exact number. But I know you've all discussed it a number of times. Is that close enough to be accept that number?
Did you call it Peggy?
Oh, Terry, I'm sorry, Terry.
I don't recall that exactly.
Really?
I don't think that's ever been presented.
I believe it's been in many of the papers, because I've seen some of those papers.
It's not in our work, though.
Yes. There's also the number of properties that would be affected by this ordinance. And I think your numbers were 12, 13. Let's call between 10 and 15 would be initially preserved, preserved. And that's doing subdivisions. So, I know that many people here have said that there's no risk, it's not real, you know, we haven't had a problem, we're not gonna have a problem. And if that's true, I haven't seen any information that says there is no problem, there hasn't been a problem, no one has presented that information. So, ponderance of information is that it's a good idea to do this and even if it isn't necessary, to give the planning board a tool to use if and when they feel it's important to do that. And anybody that came before the planning board and ran into this issue and was concerned about it, they have some outlets, they have an appeal process. They can go back and appeal the planning board. And as we know, we've passed something last summer, I think, that one of our members said we didn't need a site, you know, restriction, easement. And we overrode the planning board on that. So, there are plenty of options and plenty of ways that people can get relief should they feel they need relief from the ordinance. In the meantime, the planning board would have a tool and again, those people have options for relief. As I said, we're all here to represent the vast majority of the public. So, if there's 700 and so, 720 or 30 households that are totally relying on individual private wells, using a figure of three people per household, which probably is a fairly low number, that's about 22,000 to 23,000, depending on the number of actual households that have private wells.
2200.
Hundred.
Not thousand.
Hundred. Twenty-two hundred, I'm sorry, yes. Twenty-two hundred, excuse me.
Town just got a lot bigger.
Yeah. Oh, man. And our population is eight, eight thousand or so, so that's a lot of people.
Seventy-seven.
And just ask somebody who doesn't have power from the hurricanes what it's like not to have fresh water. It can be pretty disturbing. So, if there's no need, then there's no risk to actually have this ordinance. I'm asking some of the people that have been against it, why haven't they come forward with a proposal that said the town will identify and protect all these homeowners, should there be a subdivision next to them? And, you know, protect them for the next five years. Anything goes wrong as, you know, as can be contributed to this, to the new developments next to them? Why doesn't the town just step up? Why haven't you proposed that we step up and identify these people? We'll protect them. We'll provide them with fresh water for as long as they need it, if something happens within the first five years. That's how you, if there's no risk, there's no cost, and then you should have something to protect the people just in case. But if there's no risk, then it shouldn't be a problem. We should all be in favor of protecting these people should something go wrong. Because that's how you correct a mistake in the opposite direction. I haven't heard anybody even suggest such a thing. Unfortunately, you see, I've been on vacation at a family wedding and I've had too much time to think on planes. How do you solve a problem? If there, you know, because some people think there's a problem, then there's another. Usually, there's a back and forth and you come up with a solution. The solution would be identify all these people. Now, what will happen to our AAA bond rating? I don't think it will actually help. It may actually wipe it out. And there's also the issue of cost to developer. It's, it would be a 10 to a percent, probably more like 100 to a percent of the total development costs if a developer decides to buy the property and subdivide it. That's not a lot. Chances are that's gonna get passed along to the buyer anyway. Would a family that has... With a family that is interested in doing a subdivision, and I understand because a couple of members of the planning board mentioned it, that they would have to pay for the studies to be done if they decided to subdivide their property for state purposes. That was in a public sector, probably go back to a state substance. If there's only 10 or 20 people, families that have this, and they want to do it for state purpose, I believe in state planning. I have been trained in financial planning. I think that stuff's all really good. But, you know, if there's a small cost of doing it, which would be pretty small, let's say it's going to be absolutely enormous. So, it would be worth it to them and quite honestly, it would help ensure that the legacy and the value of those properties going forward would be better because we'd have this kind of an ordinance. And the residents who might be reading headlines about other places getting, running out of water or having contamination and having all kinds of other issues, would have known that this town had the foresight to pass this well in advance and that the risk is very minimal because we have these things in place. I think that helps the value of those properties and helps those landowners. Likewise, for the person who's developing it, taking the risk of knowing, as the one case we've had in town, the developer wanted to do the assessment, wanted to do those tests because they didn't want to build houses and find out that they didn't have adequate water. That developer did it voluntarily because he was a small developer. So, finally, you know, we're here again to represent the sworn interest of the public. We're not supposed to have any conflicts, we're not supposed... we're not supposed to have any conflicts, we're not supposed to show favoritism, we all take that oath, as do the people at the town boards, police officers and employees. I can say that I've always been very concerned about even something that's as small as an appearance of a conflict. I try to avoid them like the plague, because I don't ever have to want to hire an attorney or defend myself for something that was just stupid. I think our attorney, county attorney can say I've probably called him at least once a year, or more often, when I was concerned that the, not just an appearance, but an actual conflict. The difference between an actual conflict and the appearance of a conflict are very different. Actual conflict is a legal issue, appearance is a moral issue. And I've always been concerned about that. I'm not going to ask for a show of hands of how many times, or if any of you have ever called the town's attorney over a potential conflict of interest. I'm not going to ask any of you, show of hands, or great friendships, relatives, other interests, in people who owe these properties, or landlords, developers, builders, or anything else. I don't want to embarrass anybody. But I can tell you that being on the planning board, not having a tool, and this is a tool, again, to help the planning board with the subdivision on Avenue, the one that's over in the, Passas Tarx.
Wesley.
Wesley, thank you, Wesley, how are you? Those properties did not even need to come for a variance, they were legal subdivisions. The planning board had no tool to make the developer change the driveway, profile, or anything. They were absolutely, taste history, taste law said, we had no right to interfere with that subdivision, because they're all legal lots. It's not fun being on the planning board and not having those tools. So I encourage all of you, I sleep well tonight, I hope you can all sleep good night, and I suggest that we all get together, as we have through every other issue that has come up for us in the last two and a half years, and support this, or if you're not really still convinced, perhaps you can sleep. That's all I have to say.
All right.
I'm going to close the public hearing, motion to pass on final reading, and the draft is published.
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Youngblood.
Second.
Second by Mr. Delio. Roll call, please.
Mr. Burbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Delio?
No.
Mr. Deportaire?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
Motion, ordinance is not passed, three to two, not in favor.
Shame.
The citizens, not the developers.
Absolutely shameful.
Yeah. No downside.
Yeah. That's why all the citizens came out, you not represent us. Who can we work for?
Got a public hearing's closed now, thank you, sorry.
I'll just let everybody know that I did speak with many of the community members who support the aquifer ordinance, who are parents and good friends of mine, and they were very upset they couldn't be here tonight.
Okay.
I did let them know that we had a member that wasn't present, and they're very upset about that.
Thank you.
So I just want you to know.
All right, thank you.
Community with a...
Open the, open the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you, and thank you.
Thank you. Open a public hearing, ordinance seventeen, seventeen fifty-one. Increasing and amending positions in the police department and amending chapter two of the borough code entitled administrations. Chris, anything on public safety? Your chief, you have any comments on this right now?
Yeah, we, we had a meeting recently, and with some of the officers that are, I think we just had a resignation letter come in today, right? That we wanted to go ahead and get this in, to increase the number of twenty officers.
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Can't close the door, they just have to be quiet.
So we're basically replacing an officer that is leaving.
That's correct. So we had one who gave a resignation letter today, which was expected or suspected. And chief, you want to pick up from there about what the plan is?
Was it senior person, or junior?
No, junior.
Junior.
Someone who's been here only for six, eight months.
We've already interviewed people, and there's someone on the list, correct?
We have.
So, so we had, we had a vacancy from an earlier resignation from earlier this year. The council authorized staffing to nineteen officers, and subsequent to that, we got another resignation to take place. So we're continuing to lose officers, and we anticipate within the next two, three years, some more retirements with very young police force right now. So we'd like to prepare ourselves, not only for now, and position ourselves for the present, but prepare ourselves for the future. So, you know, we've had numerous discussions about this, there have been studies by outside working agencies, the prosecutor's attorney, and criminal past, all three studies have indicated that our staffing are below optimal levels, and below the staffing is needed to staff hard throw. We've had discussions in public safety about this, and we've discussed it in that at the last council meeting as well. So I would just ask that you pass this ordinance, and then we reorganize the police department to deal with the issues that we have at hand now, and then prepare ourselves for the future.
What does the reorganization entail?
The reorganization entails adding two more officers to the table of organization.
That's not reorganization, that's just staff.
Well, let me finish what I'm saying.
It's in our package, too.
That's the first thing. That will allow us to create a supervisor for a full fifth spot, and we'll put an additional officer on duty on Monday through Friday on an eight-hour shift, so we'll have an extra officer from seven to three, an officer from three to eleven, and we'll have a supervisor, and these officers' responsibilities will be able to deal with issues involving community policing, traffic, working with zoning and code enforcement officers, who better work together to meet some of their needs as well, to deal with the things where we have day-to-day continuity issues, where we don't have enough officers who are here every single day of the week because of the rotating schedule that they work from days to nights, and the pivot schedule that puts them off for long periods of time. We have a break in continuity, we're not able to follow through as well as we would like to, to deal with some of these businesses comprehensively as we can. It also includes school programs, community programs, and everything that might come up on a daily basis. So that would be the responsibility of those officers assigned to that fifth spot. One of the big benefits, Mr. Burbaum, about this would be hopefully an impact on the overtime budget by placing additional officers on duty for procs when he's on for sixteen hours out of the day. If an officer does call in sick, or if we have an absence where we have to backfill with overtime, because of the increasing training demands that are being placed on police departments across the state, we're not the only ones that rest and visit you, we will have extra staff on duty, so we will not have to pay overtime to do some of that. So there are some financial difficulties. And I think one of the, one of the things that we discussed repeatedly is that if there's ever a time to do this, the time to do this is now. The administrator was asked to provide a financial analysis as to the impact of this. With senior officers leaving and being replaced with junior officers, there's a net cost savings there. We're recouping salaries.
Temporarily, yeah, short term.
Short term, but into the future, because of the step system, it's not going to go up dramatically immediately. The administrator was asked to do cost analysis of that, and I think that because ever a time to do this now is the least expensive time, and will have the least expensive impact on our budget going forward. If we do this now, if we wait, I think that we could have some more dramatic impacts going down the road that might have us think otherwise. And we have this...
I wasn't questioning the judgment and recommendation, I just thought that it would be beneficial for the public to hear more about, you know, what the plan is and how we're doing this.
And I'm fully prepared to deal with those issues as well, I have no problem with that whatsoever. So I'm trying to wrap up months of conversations and years of studies into, you know, a five-minute recap of why, why we need to do this now.
I do.
So that's it.
This is good, because it gets out for everybody to hear, to know what's going on.
Anybody from the public? Looking to be heard. No, okay. I just picked you up, I'll dare you, raise your hand, say. Anybody from the council?
No, I'm going to pass.
All right, close the public hearing, motion to pass on final reading is not this published, Mr. Deportaire moves, Mr. Schmidt seconds, on roll call, please.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Deportaire?
Yes.
Mr. Delio?
Yes.
Mr. Burbaum?
Yep.
All right, I entertain a motion to move that ordinance seventeen, seventeen fifty-two, appropriating this sum of $26,000 for the acquisition of a four-wheel drive vehicle for the Public Works and Facilities Department, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 PM on Tuesday, October 10, 2017. A motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Youngblood, seconded by Mr. Delio, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it.
So, let me try to just comment on this. So this, the vehicle replacement was an old crown there?
Yeah, Ralph, yeah, one vehicle went down.
Yes, one vehicle, we have two, and one has to be taken off the road.
It broke down several times on high...
We really used it until it was not useful anymore.
Yes.
So we, uh...
The crusher's going to balk at it.
I think everybody recognizes...
It broke down on my, but it did break down on my mountain road when I was driving.
And we will, and we will...
After our mechanic left for the day.
We will have a public hearing on this.
Thank you for correcting me.
Totally, yes.
And Larry could fix everything and anything, and he said, "That's it, I can't do it."
What are we getting for twenty-six grand?
A small Jeep.
Or other...
Or cylinder four-wheel drive.
Or something similar.
Okay.
Or Ford Escape.
Right. Hopefully something that has a decent repair record.
Okay, move on. Entertaining motion to move that ordinance seventeen, seventeen fifty-three, and ordinance increasing the number of permitted Burners High School parking space and library lot from five to fifteen, and amending chapter eight of the borough code entitled Parking Lots and Off-Street Traffic Regulations, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 PM Tuesday, October 10.
I'd like to move to table this to the next meeting, there's some additional information I want to confer with the chief and the rest of the, I would say, some things that came up.
Okay, and this is only introduction at this point, but if the council...
I would like to second the motion to table it, because...
Okay, not a problem.
I think, you know, at one time, the board came here about expanding their facilities and putting more and more parking places, and I asked, very naively, you know, how come they can't limit the spaces to seniors first, and then some kind of allocation? And they said, "Oh, well, it's a public school, we can't do that." I don't believe that that is fundamentally accurate. I believe the schools can provide certain guidelines. And I think that we're, you know, holding the bag for all of the, all of the issues that they may have.
Okay.
And I don't think it's a good idea for us to be...
Who gets more information? Okay, I'm...
Oh, wait a minute, we're going to table, what's not accurate? I'm missing, would you say it's not accurate? I'm not sure that there's, that they cannot control the amount of vehicles and some of the further circuits are going. Not everybody has to drive school. I understand. So, you know, I'd like...
It's just one of the other issues we have to go with.
It would be helpful if they actually came forward to that, just to, you know...
There's, there's a couple of issues we really have to work through, and have all our answers proper.
But we can't be the dumping ground for their, you know, their issues.
All right, all in favor of table?
I'm against the school system, I'm just against certain policies that just seem like it's going to...
All right, we're going to table, and until the next meeting?
Thank you.
Yes. Chief, we could probably meet and talk about this sometime in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, absolutely, I think, just older facilities, building the grounds as well, I think they have some concerns.
In fairness, get it all out.
I'll call a public safety meeting sometime next week, and we'll put it together.
Okay, so we're table on this till the October 10, 2017, meeting at seven, at 7:00 PM. All in favor of table?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. All right, resolutions, and we're going to, Bill, you're going to pull one?
Yeah, I'd like to pull seventeen, one eighty-three.
Okay.
We just, we don't quite have our ducks in a row, we would just make sure all the numbers are accurate, so let's just push that, push that to our next meeting, please.
All right, anyone else?
No, I'm good.
Good? Bill, you're good, you have to...
Um...
Chris?
I'm good.
Peter?
I do have a question on one seventy-nine.
Okay.
John, you're here, John, can I ask a question? Okay, the contractor for the steel plant, is this, we've had problems with our...
The lawn guy?
The lawn guy, and, and, you know, these people have been responding, I know usually they're out there really quick, I just want to make sure that you're absolutely...
This is the same guy that had our entire contract last year, he's had it for multiple years. He needs to be reminded every now and then, like, like most people, but he responds, he's pretty loyal.
Overall, you're happy?
Yes. And, you know, again, it's always been pretty quick, so, thank you.
Anything else, anyone?
No.
All right, seeing none, I entertain a motion to move resolutions seventeen, one seventy-one to seventeen, one eighty-two, removing seventeen, one eighty-three, and move seventeen, one eighty-four to seventeen, one eighty-nine. It was moved by Mr. Deportaire, seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Burbaum, on roll call, please.
Mr. Burbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Delio?
Yes.
Mr. Deportaire?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
All right, item number nine, nine A, reported municipal attorney, anybody have any questions for the attorney, or any comments on the report?
No.
All right. Seeing, Peter? I know you're distracted.
Good.
Okay. I've seen, now we'll move on to nine B.
We had a, we had a meeting recently, mostly for the purpose of interviewing possible candidates for police officers. I know we wanted to also, chief, you want to talk a little bit about the side, sorry, crosswalk that they're thinking of adding from the county?
Sure, I'd be glad to do that. We have a few things that follow up to the last report that was filed. One, just want to remind everybody that the coffee with a cup is going to be held on October 4th at Starbucks at the Kings Plaza from seven to nine AM in the morning. If you're available, please stop by. Starbucks is co-hosting that with us, and you get a free cup of coffee, and to meet some of the officers that we have working here in Burnsville. The other thing that I just want to bring to your attention is that Burnsville news that's out presently, there's an article in there regarding the office of emergency management receiving volunteers, organizations currently trying to rebuild our resources and build up our staff for 2018. Our OEM program relies not only on our big professional police officers and our DPW staff, but it also relies on volunteer fire department, or rescue squad, and community volunteers who pitch in to fill in the gaps and work with us on various different programs that are vitally important to our ability to be able to respond to local emergencies and disasters. The seeking people who are willing to help us in the, in the emergency shelter, if we don't have a shelter, we're looking for shelter nurses, we're looking for people with experience or desire, that are willing to go out to the field and do rapid needs assessments and damage assessments following incidents like Hurricane Sandy. We have seventy-two hours to turn around information to the state, that makes us eligible and determines the amount of funding that we will get from the federal government. If we fall short on our damage assessment and our rapid needs assessments, we're selling ourselves a hundred and dollars that we might be able to get back to the federal government. As you recall, Sandy accounted for two and a half million dollars, and a lot of that was made possible as a result of the damage assessment teams and the volunteers that we had working on the street. We're looking for people to do the pointer distributions as far as the item commodities such as water, and food, and emergency kits and bike kits in the event that they're needed, and be people trained to be able to do those functions as well. So there's a variety of opportunities, including our SERF team, the Community Emergency Response Team, that works very closely with the police and fire. For citizens, all eight, of all ages, adults from eighteen, whether they be college students, senior citizens, retired personnel, or just people who have some spare time, this is a place for everybody. Training is minimal, it depends on the position that you seek, some require a little bit more training, some a little bit less, but it's really not overwhelming, it's a big help for us when we need it. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to stress this being important, so getting a word out, we really, really need to bolster our capacity, plus the volunteers after Sandy, So, I just wanted to take this opportunity to stress the importance of getting a word out, that we really, really need to bolster our, we have a new plus of volunteers after Sandy that has steadily declined in the last five years. Um, and as we started tracking Hurricane Irma or Hurricane Priya, we realized we really need to build up our ranks again, uh, we hope to do so in two thousand and eighteen. So, if you know of anybody that's one of the scientists in the Marley. Um, as we sit here tonight, I don't think it was weird, but it was weird, like, uh, one point seven on a Ricky's scale centered in Mars Plains, about twenty minutes before it began tonight. Uh, some people did feel a little turmoil over our March gravel road area, um, I didn't feel it here, I don't know if anyone else did. But we are prone to, you know, winter storms or earthquakes and other types of natural disasters, you know, real, uh, real life, it's like you're sitting here and we didn't know that happened, so I did, I had that. Anyway, that's, uh, for your information.
Two years ago, we had a two-point seven.
Uh, yeah, it's great. Question?
I, I was just going to say, uh, that, that, uh, you know, the library staff has turned over almost completely, and so we've put out a, uh, at the last staff meeting, uh, there was a pitch to all the new staff members about looking into this and joining, and I also want to tell you all if you don't already know that our generator is hooked up.
Yes.
And it was ready and working, and we didn't, we didn't need it, but it's done.
No, thank, thank you for that, we, we, we worked, Doug, Mr. Burbaum, getting on board for us quickly, but, uh, we didn't know what we were in store for, hurricane season goes from the end of November.
Right.
So, the library's on, will work on the board down with the generator, but thank you to your staff, you're very helpful, the library staff has been incredibly, uh, helpful and provided a tremendous amount of resources to us, and we, we want to continue to work with you and get more people trained to do this.
Doug is, nice job, Doug, Doug.
Good job.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So, to get back to your question, the sidewalk.
Oh, yes.
There, in the past, uh, there's been...
Crosswalk, not sidewalk, right?
Yeah, crosswalk.
Right.
Um, we've, we've discussed, uh, the need for a crosswalk at Route two oh two in Depot Place, uh, at the train station right next to the Grand and Feed. Several business owners over the past several months, it actually started last year, people started expressing concerns about the people crossing that location and the speedings of the transition zone from kind of a, a rural road to a, to a, you know, concentrated business district. And there's a lot of pedestrian activity, the speeds are, you know, probably a little too fast for some of the people who, who cross here at that location, and there was a suggestion that perhaps a crosswalk would help, but that came in after the two oh two project was completed. Why the state didn't address it at that time, I, I really don't know, I can't speak to that, but we did write a letter, I did, a verbal letter to the partner transportation, and asked them to investigate the feasibility of putting a crosswalk at Depot Place in response to requests and concerns that we were having from citizens. And they ultimately responded, um, they came out, we met with them, and they seem to feel that it's warranted, it's needed, and it's relatively easy to, uh, to not require any regulatory, um, issues or any matters, there's already an intersecting street at that location, so it would be easy for them to come in and just basically put the crosswalk in. What it would, uh, require, however, is a realignment of some of the parking in that area, which, which already has, is really occurring, because when the curb bump downs were put in several years ago, and the sidewalk project was done, and with the two, work on two oh two, none of the parking spaces really aligned with the regulations that were in place, the state regulations that were in place as far as where parking is supposed to be and not be. So, they came and they looked at it, they're simplifying it, you're, it's not going to be any changes that you really notice, most of, most of the parking on two oh two, but in the area where they wanted to lose the crosswalk, we will be losing one space, which, which is actually pretty good, that's to allow for proper site clearance so that pedestrians can be visible to approaching vehicles from both directions. Um, they've come up with a preliminary design, uh, one of our officers, Officer Ferroff, has met with them out on the scene, uh, I've talked to John Dowell about it, I've sent some photographs of the area, um, last minute today, um, so that you can see the area where we're talking about if you weren't familiar with it. The only obligation to the borough would be to, to move the parking spaces around when the crosswalk goes in, to reposition the striping on the road to, in alignment with the, with the parking spaces, exactly what's involved, I don't know, I want to meet with D O T. again, to find out, but it doesn't seem to be a heavy list whatsoever, it's the only financial responsibility that we would have for this project, which is highly unusual for anything that we ask for D O T. to do, or to, if they normally want a seventy-five percent or fifty percent.
Do we have to put a drop curb in, and the tactile striping everywhere?
You know, I'd have to find out specifically what they want to do with the curbing, um, I know there is a drop curb already on the train station side on Depot Place, and what they're talking about doing to that is bringing it across at an angle, I don't know exactly where it's going to land on the other side, they may position it to a place where there's already a drop. I'm, I'm really not exactly sure where it's going, but anything that they do, they would, would be on that, and they would do the regulations, the only things that they said we would have to do was the striping, um, is repaint the striping when we're on that. I think it's, uh, I think it's made, there was karate, karate kids, studios, uh, is there, the kids crossing, evening, dark, no lights, it's like, the restaurant is here, I, I personally spoke to the owner of Bistro Seven Three, and he is one hundred percent in favor of it, uh, Officer Ferroff advised me today that he spoke with the, uh, the, uh, Master Kwan at the, uh, karate studio, he's a hundred percent in favor of it. I previously talked to John Henry at Burners Auto Repair, who was one of the people originally brought to my town, he was concerned about the safety of the kids, he is a hundred percent in favor of it, um, it really will not affect Grand and Feed, it's on, it's on the other side of the intersection, I didn't speak to anybody there, but as far as parking on, on the highway, there goes a mating businesses right in immediate vicinity that would be impacted, and they're all in favor of this, I think they're playing the order, the order, because somebody just approved a laundromat to go in next to the karate studio, so there's, uh, likely that people will be parking in the train station and walking across the street.
Chief, is that the road we're crossing again?
What's that?
Is that the road we're crossing again?
Is that, uh, exactly where, from the corner of Depot Place and Route two oh two on the train station side?
Okay, right.
To a point, I mean, this is ahead of the street, I don't know exactly if it's gonna angle to the north or to the south.
That's where, yeah, there are lights.
But it's not gonna go straight across, it's gonna, they want, the D O T. is advising, they want to put it across at a slight angle.
And that's a good place, especially with the other, you know, passing lanes by the, which we talked about before.
No, I don't think it's, it's, um, it's needed, so, what, what D O T. advised is they didn't want, they asked me for permission to go ahead and do this, and I said, "This wasn't a decision for me to make, I really wanted council consensus before we did this, we did speak to the business owners as I, as I explained, and, um, they don't want to do any more work on this until they know they were behind them because of the loss of the, of the, at this point, it seems like one parking space." So, um, you know, we wanted to make sure that we're fully aware that there would be a loss of some, I said, at the time, I didn't know how many parking spaces, that appears as one, um, so I just look for consensus.
So, Kevin, uh, that area is kinda dark, are we gonna add some more streetlights there?
No, I have to look at, I haven't looked at it, like, there is a light right in that area, and I don't know how bright it is, but maybe we're to increase the, uh, the light of that.
But it's not gonna be one of those flashing crosswalks, right?
No, there's no, not at this time, I mean, at some point down the road, if, if, you know, we wanted to do something like that, we could, there would be a cost here to the borough on that, it's not inexpensive, uh, but they will put up the appropriate advanced sign, you know, the warning signs for pedestrian crosswalk and the signs at the crosswalk, and we could give permission to modify the regulation for the in-street pedestrian sign as well, so that we would have another set in-street pedestrian sign.
Now, the two that are further up by the train station exit will remain?
Everything remains.
Okay.
Where this is an additional crosswalk, where we have people crossing the street right now. They're not walking up to, uh, to those other crosswalks.
Yeah, I know, I see them going in the restaurant at night, it's kinda dark there, so I think...
We could look at the lighting issues after the crosswalk is in.
One, one, quick question, I hope, Chief, um, the bus stop, um, does the bus stop need to be as large as it is, or are there some regulations that regulate how big they are?
You know, those are, um, state, state regulations, they're not our regulations, um, but the bus stop actually, in this case, is going to work to our advantage because it will help us with the required site clearance and the no parking area. I don't think that the bus stop will, I haven't seen the final plans, so I'm not sure exactly how this is gonna, that, but from what I understand, there should not be any, that, uh, bus stop.
Anything else, Chris?
That's it.
All right, that was, um, Council Public Safety Committee Report, nine B, nine C, Council Public...
So, we're, we're moving forward, right, you need to vote?
I'm, I'm prepared to vote to contact D O T. and look forward to that if they significantly change, if there are things that can come back to you, but, you know, I'd like your consensus to go ahead and tell them that we're in favor of it, and it's a good idea.
All right, everybody in favor?
In favor.
Aye.
Peter?
Yes, yes.
Okay, the ayes have it, everybody in favor. All right, nine C, Finance and Personnel Committee.
Uh, we finally were able to get a meeting together, um, it was fully attended, and, um, a lot of the things you're hearing about tonight, um, were, were covered there, so that's about it.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Uh, next month is capital items.
Yes.
For, uh, so the departments will be, um, expressing their interest in capital, so...
It will be, uh, that personnel finance will be starting to review the capital item request in the beginning of November.
All right, nine D, um, Council Engineering Technology and Public Works Committee.
So, Bill's gonna give an update?
Yeah, no, Public Works, um, a lot happening, uh, uh, over the summer, so, uh, as was mentioned prior, uh, Highview needs, still need some striping and to clean up everything, but, uh, that project is basically finished, so we were able to put drainage, curbing, uh, and pave that, uh, so, had a lot of real positive comments from, uh, from some of those, uh, those residents.
Really one of our worst rivers.
Yeah.
It's good it's done.
Um, I'd spoke to someone today, they were talking about Anderson, so, uh, obviously that's in the works, we can't get, get to that yet, but, uh, clearly, uh, we're addressing the needs by...
Anderson, oh yeah, that's what we've been talking about, that's next year.
You know, we're, we're putting that in for, uh, we're putting that in for, uh, our matching grant for the county to make sure we work on that. Uh, the contract for Liberty, uh, was awarded, uh, so, um, we'll be able to get, uh, Liberty started, probably not gonna be able to finish that this year, but try to get as much work, uh, done there as possible. Some interesting developments, uh, with the bridge that we were talking about, uh, coming off of Polo and running down towards Peter.
The open space.
The trail's extension to...
The walking bridge.
Right, so, um, we were able to utilize, uh, a forestry service design for that.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, I know we had received one quote, we're trying to, uh, you know, get a second, uh, but, you know, it looks like we're gonna be able to probably pull that project in somewhere closer to twenty grand, uh, when we were talking, you know, with that original bridge span being closer to eighty-five. So, uh, uh, it looks, it looks like a, a good project, but at substantially reduced costs.
Can we take the money that we save for that to develop the trails from that bridge like we talked about all the way up to the Polo Grounds?
Awesome.
There's gonna be a lot of cost for that, but yeah.
I mean, we had money in the budget basically for that, that was the first thing, we wanted to get that infrastructure in place, and if we were able to save some money, we were talking about doing something going up potentially.
Right, and also, uh, around the Polo Grounds, I think we've got a lot of...
That's mostly manpower, just, uh, trimming and cut, cut a trail and...
But certainly with, you know...
Still dollars and cents, I mean, it's one of those things that we can help along.
Right, but with, you know, obviously...
A lot of chain sharpening I have to do, I have to take it.
Yeah, with sixty thousand dollars of the savings, there's a lot of wet projects.
I have to tell with it.
Yeah.
I feel like it's a recreation.
Obviously, as everybody saw from coming in tonight, we're just about finished here with all the projects, uh, municipal site, uh, the striping's been laid out, you're starting to see some of the light stations go in, so, uh, we're...
You may be able to see the lights outside, that's what I was verifying, my miller got those all hooked up, so when you walk out, you'll be able to see your way to the car.
So, uh, a, a little, a little work, but, uh, we're almost in a home stretch there of some, some much needed, uh, improvements. Terms of the milling and paving, uh, a lot of what happened in the borough was done at the end of August and into September, uh, but Spring House, Jean, Charles Park, Post Conard, Berkshire, so we, we were able to get a lot of, uh, streets, uh, worked on here in the past, uh, two months. We're talking a little, obviously, just about the train station, uh, we're working on Doug's getting quotes for some curb removal and replacement that we need there, uh, mill and pave to finish so that we can, uh, uh, get rid of some of those potholes and really improve.
And stripe.
And stripe. Um, and, uh, so that, that will be coming, um, Doug's working on that currently. Uh, if you've been up to the Polo Grounds, uh, the work is proceeding very quickly on the turf field, uh, get a real good sense for what it's gonna look like, um, and the contractor is, uh, should, should pretty much be finished by, uh, October twentieth. So, working with the schools to try to get, uh, P E. time, get some of the kids down there on those other areas so that we can work that. It was mentioned before in terms of the generator for the library, um, as Doug mentioned before, that went off without a hitch, so, ho- hopefully we never have to use it, but it's there, it's there when we're ready.
We didn't have any complaints about the unexpected day of closing, but they, because they saw that it was four.
Right.
And everybody said, "Okay, we'll come back tomorrow."
Excellent. Minor, but, uh, we've also been working this year on replacing several guide rails, uh, guard rail systems, uh, Laurel Wood, Rippling Brook, uh, Mount Harmony, um, so all of that work's been, uh, completed. As we talked, uh, recently about the Public Works Storage Shed, uh, rough, the road department has already graded out the, the slab area, uh, there's a pre-construction meeting scheduled for, I guess it was last, last month, or last week, uh, so that's moving forward with that garage so we can get our, get all the equipment, uh, out here out of the parking lot and, uh, and store it a little properly. Uh, we did add a streetlight on Borough's Ave and Orchard, again, uh, resident had asked for that, so we put a streetlight in, um, and...
Just wanna add one thing, um, the train station paving, is there any discussions about when to complete that, and we talked about nighttime, maybe weekends?
Yeah, the whole, uh, what we're trying to, her, what we're trying to get open now is with New Jersey Transit, we can get a firm commitment, whether it be flight people, safety people, uh, so that's really been the whole, so I have a deal with like three or four people, uh, we're gonna have to come up with a plan for how we best, um, shut down and park the lot and do it.
It might be a function of dealing with New Jersey Transit, and it's like where the chips may lay, unfortunately, it's kinda like the closing down library on Thursday, you know, if you can't get it when you need it in order to do the work that you have to get done.
Yeah, I think we're, we're probably gonna have to do it at night, I think that would probably be the best, um, you know, we can mill it one night, pay it the next night, and we can probably strike on Sunday.
All right, so we'll probably have to notify the businesses, I guess, 'cause they do use those parking spots.
Yeah.
It might be worthwhile putting, um, a flyer on the windshield of the cars that are parked there, too.
Sure, easy.
Except shoppers and commuters, so hopefully...
So, we actually have, uh, we have the bids in for the, uh, curbing, so the contractor's ready to go with that, again, the whole is just trying to work all these issues through, uh, Transit.
So, we should, yeah, so we're trying to...
Hopefully by the end of the week, we're gonna have a firm commitment with Transit as to what we need to do before you start the curb work, we only have about maybe a week of curb work, and then maybe one night milling, one night paving, and a day of striding, so we should be able to do this on the shit.
And the last thing, and again, it's a little preliminary, but, uh, one of the things that we're starting to, a- as Doug is looking at, um, all of our facilities, uh, we're, we're starting to pull together, uh, a comprehensive plan to address several of our park systems, uh, whether that's, uh, to include hopefully, uh, both Claremont, Kiwanis, uh, additional work that we, we may want to do here around Municipal Park.
Paulos.
And, um, and up at Polo, so, uh, you know, several buildings could be actually replaced, uh, really get in and look at, uh, we looked at, you know, potentially redoing two of those playground areas, they haven't been touched in a long time, so this would be a, a fairly large project, it could, you know, magnitude could...
You just got them fixed?
The, uh, the, you know, what to do, to really tackle, you know, the ones that I think there's a lot that are really kind of in some disrepair, so, uh, fairly sizable, you know, tackling all those could, could, could push a million dollars, but to really, you know, get all of those dressed up, uh, and, uh, and then, so, anyway, more, more on that as we, uh, as put those plans together.
Little question, John, um, a couple of residents that live on, on or off of Mount Airy with the construction that's been going on, um, is there an end date that's been projected for when that's all?
It's done.
It is, it is finished now, okay.
It appears last week, I know, I live there, last week.
I'm sorry.
The only thing that's left is the paving, Somerset County's requiring them to repave one lane that was within the, or both lanes within the, well, the project limits of the prior project, but further out towards Pill Hill, they're gonna mill and pave one lane, and the county will want them to wait for a little while, make sure there's no settlement.
Right.
But that, that's it, the meantime, noise is over, but...
That was the other question, because, you know, the wall was being done, and they put a nice beautiful road in there, and then they just, a year and a half later go rip it up, are they gonna repave it?
It's pretty unusual for...
It's only a section, small section.
The water main, it's quite a, and it's from South Street out to Bill Hill, which wasn't done as a part of the, uh...
Yeah, that's why they come back, they came back, because they had, when we did the Mount Airy Road project, they redid the water main at that time, so this was outside of the bounds of that project, so that's why it hadn't been done, so it really, it's connecting from what we did prior going out to Bill Hill.
I mean, when's the last time that, uh, water line's been upgraded, though, thirty years, forty years?
Keep going.
You know, you don't wanna Flint, Michigan, all of a sudden everybody can't use their, you know, water, that would be disaster. That would be a disaster, you have to do it, unfortunately.
They could use it. At their own risk. All right, anything else, Paul?
Not on, I have a couple of quick comments just from Shade Tree and H-Pac.
Before you go.
Yes.
When is the rubbish drop off?
The 14th, what's the date?
October 14th.
So and.
Landfill.
Landfill, October 14th.
And notices of.
Please note.
Is that the day of the hunt?
No, the hunt is the 21st, so it's the Saturday before, so that flyer is out.
Thank you.
A couple of things on Shade Tree. There's, we're trying to streamline the process in terms of permits to remove trees. The, Jack, none of the changes that we talked about relate to, I don't believe, an ordinance. We were, we had, it's the recommendation of Shade Tree that the permits now be applied for at the library, which is where everything else is currently.
You mean at the.
We're building zoning.
Building and zoning.
Oh, and zoning office is not.
Right.
Not in the library, but the facility's at the library. There's no, because if they're getting multiple permits, they have to come to the borough to do the Shade Tree permit, and then they've got to go over to the other, so it obviously makes sense to move it over there. We also, Shade Tree feels that zoning office should take over with the initial field inspection, and that if an arborist is required, they'll bring in Dennis or Joe or one of the other members of the Shade Tree, but we think we should move that actual inspection over to our other staff. So those are the two recommendations from Shade Tree, is to change, move the permitting process and also make that change. I don't think that's an ordinance, or?
Either one requires an ordinance, the person's administrative and the administrative coverage is second one.
Okay, so.
What do they reconsider, because it's been.
No, I think it really will help with the inspection process. And we're also working to tie in all of those, you know, permits and inspections so that they can be a little more efficient and speed up that process.
And hopefully they'll do photos before and after, so that they have documentation.
Yep.
And understand there've been some issues.
Yep, no, and that's one of the things, the, basically, you know, we've talked, worked through date stamping the application when it comes in, you know, taking permits beforehand. One of the things we haven't really followed up, I don't think enough, is, you know, post-site inspection, what's been done. You know, if monies were required to go into the Shade Tree fund, so, you know, just really a much tighter process moving forward. On H-Pac, the, obviously, we're just waiting in terms of the grant application. As Dan mentioned before, the walking tour downtown, we want to make sure everybody's available to participate in that. Hopefully, the awards for, we don't know anything new, right?
No, but tomorrow is when the Cultural Heritage Commission presents their decision to the freeholders. So the freeholders will make a decision regarding Somerset County, which depends, depends to that application tomorrow.
And, you know what, we can, we'll discuss, we'll discuss the lease, Jack.
Dan just gave me a five-page draft response that we're sending in Green Acres, and she's waiting for approval. I've got her, and it was a very thorough and detailed response, so once I get the final go-ahead, I'll just forward it down to Green Acres.
I'm just waiting for the treasurer's of friends to give us a one-page analysis, financial analysis, send it to him, and then we can go down to Green Acres.
So we're a lot closer to wrapping up that lease transfer.
Yes, we are.
That's all I have.
Okay.
We have questions on that to the bridge, but John, are we able to escape now, John? The, a lot of the environmental work on that bridge?
Yes.
Okay, which is why you cited a number, okay.
Cost savings.
Right, I just want to remind you, and Ralph also, that we need to keep track of all of our expenses and also in-kind services so that, because it's a cost-sharing grant, so a lot of this proof, you know, what's gone into it. A lot of work has gone into this stage, although not all the soft kind of costs are out, but it's, either way, it's very, thanks.
Anyone else on the committee report?
I'll give an update for Rep. Active Month. So Recreation Report, this is for August and September, so summer camps ended the end of August. There was only one camp canceled due to low numbers, so it was a very productive year. Also, we had a lot of activity on our new outdoor basketball courts. Neil conducted a league this year, it was 19s participated in the league, and it kept the kids busy for a couple of months, which is great. And we also had a free basketball clinic. It was held by Patrick Bosworth, one of our citizens that's been very active in our basketball program. There was 40-plus kids from fifth to ninth grade that participated in the clinic, and it actually was really great, and I went to see it, and it was a great turnout, so it was a good experience for the kids. It was a couple ex-professionals from like European leagues, and I think it was great, so the kids had, and it was boys and girls, so. Cheryl's currently scheduled an afternoon school enrichment programs, which will begin in October. A travel basketball coaches meeting was last week, and it looks like we're going to have a very active travel basketball program again. Cheryl mentioned deficient derby that will go off at 9 o'clock on Saturday. A new girls' fall softball league for eighth graders plus, tryouts held in August, so we will have a new fall softball league for our girls. Pool update, so there was three movies held at the pool. They had an intergenerational ice cream social. We had a meet of champions, and over 900 people attended this meet of champions, which is quite impressive for the complex we have. We also had the police nights out, which was, we talked about last time, we had over 300 people attended that, which was a great turnout. We had our annual Hamford Swim Meet on the 16th of July, and over, about 100 swimmers participated in that. So we also had a senior picnic and Family Day, Family Fun Day on the 23rd of July. So as you can see, we had a very active recreation program up at the Polo Grounds this year, which is great.
Which camp didn't, which camp got canceled?
I'm not sure which one, she holds 20, 30 camps, I'm not sure exactly. The good news is we, revenues were up this year, right, Ralph?
Yes.
So our pool membership was, we budgeted our pool membership a little bit lower than we have in the past based on our history, our couple previous years of membership, and we actually surpassed the amount we anticipated. And our camps were up, and we also generated revenue from the basketball camps, so we had a very productive year. That's it for Rep.
All right, any other committee reports, circulars?
Oh, you know what, let me add too. So as you know, part of the turf, our new turf field complex, we need to set rules and regulations for the field. We need to set in place our teams that have access to the facility, our shared service or whatever services we'll have with the high, with the schools, we use it in a good chunk of the time. So all that's being discussed now at the recreation level. The other thing is Cheryl and myself and Al Schaffler, we met with, we're starting to meet with some other recreational directors that have turf fields currently, so we're kind of picking their brains and kind of learning things from them, and also getting a feel for how much their fees are, what's their rules and regulations. So when we release the field to the public to start using, everything will be in place. So we're working on that for the next probably month or so to come up with that stuff.
In doing that, just make sure that you differentiate those that are covered by Green Acres and those that aren't, because there are certain limitations.
Yep. Anything will, of course, we'll go throughout our town attorney.
All right, any other reports or anybody else's comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to item of business. 10A, Board of Health Department appointment, I received a skill bank form from Michael Monica. He indicated that.
Anthony, you said this, you said it was in the package?
It was in email.
Email.
I think we should table this, I didn't have time to look at.
Gentlemen?
Should I commute the table?
Yeah, table.
Yeah, it's written in the next meeting.
All right, you're all right with that? Chris, you're all right? Okay, Billy, all right, we'll put it on for next meeting. All right, 10B, detour plan for Lloyd Road over Indian Grove project.
No, Indian Grove.
It says Indian Grove.
I know, but that's not what it is.
Sounds like Indian Grove.
Indian Grove.
Old thing.
All right. Chief, John?
The county has advised us of the need to repair that bridge, they hired the architectural firm, the engineering firm to come in and do the plans, they laid out detour plan, they believe that the, that the bridge will be closed for approximately six months. It would be a complete broker broker. Local residents will be able to gain access, obviously, to their residences from either the hardscrabble side or the men in roadside. Right now, we believe the project is scheduled to begin next spring sometime, so we don't know exactly when it is planned right now. The detours, it's very simple, we're trying to, keeping them off of Kesnut, it's going to be Washington Porter Road to hardscrabble Road. It's going to be the detour to both directions. So you have to go around.
So this is the bridge up by that lake, Kevin?
Yeah, there's a lake.
Like, almost in the middle of Lloyd Road, right?
It's further down, if you go down Lloyd Road towards hardscrabble on the left, there's those ponds, there's many hills.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
And the bridge is, was it 100 years old, Dan, the?
I think that was just 1932.
Okay, so we, it's come up in, it's come up in front of H-Pac just to look at. Sure.
Say something now or wait till possession, you want?
No, that's fine, I meant.
Okay, so is the, in the engineering department at Somerset County contacted us, actually, two, what, two years ago? And just was asking us our opinion on the bridge and any ideas we had, and we made a few suggestions about reusing the stones, and maybe reusing that marble thing with the data on it, either turning it around, putting new data or something like that. They seemed to like that idea, and so she has been a hard way, in a sense, but her nothing for two years now. She's like, can I meet you tomorrow? Well, I'm going on vacation for a weekend, but when I come back, I'll set up a meeting with her at my office, I think, actually, just to go, they want to make a presentation about what it is that they think they're incorporating based on R and D. So that, you know, I just thought it was sufficient to use this film, it's already cut, and dressed it, they could just use it as like a trim piece, and maybe two pairs in the ends or something like that.
Right, this way just, the bridge just stays a little more in keeping with the character of that neighborhood.
I just didn't know, like, you know, there's good things, you know, and you really, we have a lot of history of stone.
The, the engineering firm has asked for the administrator and myself to sign a letter authorizing the detour work. I think it's fine, I just wanted to be, I didn't want to sign it.
Okay with it, guys?
I don't think we have much option, right?
What was that?
Yeah, Peter, yeah.
Yeah, it's great. One thing, we have to pay for.
Okay, anything else on that?
Will Lloyd be paved then, I guess, it's a?
We will hold off until they do the bridge.
Yeah.
And we'll also hold off on the other one, because that'll be the detour route. What's the other, Washington?
Washington, yeah, that's a pretty bad tip.
That's the next one.
Anyone else? All right, 10C, optional access to Andrews coverage, this is with Jeff. Jack, does do anything with this or just say notification?
I referred to the risk manager, and she recommended the regular.
Okay.
And she states in her memo, Jeff limits Andrew's liability to $150,000 or something like that.
Yeah.
So she recommended the regular.
All right, and do we need action tonight? Or we'll just?
We'll work with you at the next meeting.
All right, very good. That's fine, okay. Correspondence, seeing none. Open, the second open session, anybody in the public wishing to be heard?
I don't know if any of you know, but there's a bond act issue coming up on the ballot in November. $125 million for library construction and repair bonds. It would, it would give, it would pay for half. We'd get state, we could get state money for half of the construction and repair project at the library, and it occurred to me that if you were serious about putting a new roof on next year, we ought to.
We are.
Okay, then if, if, if this passes, and we could also do some cleanup inside for less money from you, because the state would come up with, if we could get our project approved, the state would come up with it. So what I want to do is start talking to Doug about trying to put together information for a proposal so that we have a, you know, a shovel-ready proposal to go in if it passes.
Scope of work, basically, what you're saying.
Scope of work, yes, and, and, you know, we're talking about inside, some inside stuff too, maybe some myobommy corrections that would ease our ongoing difficulties there. But, you know, put it together and try to have it ready so that as soon as the state library, if this passes, if this bond issue passes, and if the state librarian has, gets the standards out, we've got something ready to submit quickly.
Would we qualify for that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, I know, this is not, you know, come, right.
It's just going to pass.
I mean, you know, in fact, the last time that they did this, incidentally, the Somerset County representatives have been, and have been principal sponsors of this, which is very interesting. You know, it's, they care about libraries, but 15 years ago, it seemed like the preference in awarding these, awarding grants under this bond issue went to people who had shovel-ready projects ready to submit. And so I just want to try to get a job on it.
Can we put a lighting upgrade potentially?
Sure.
Like LEDs type of thing?
Yeah.
Scope of work, and maybe you might get some money, it will save definitely so much money.
Oh, we would, okay.
And utilities, I think, also will contribute to that too.
Right.
Okay, I mean, and the other things, there might be some, there are probably some changes to our, to our technical services area, physical.
I'm just saying, big-ticket items, you know, it's 15 years, I mean, the lifespan for a light fixture.
Oh, I know.
And, you know, the way.
LEDs are wonderful.
Save a lot of money.
I'm sure Doug.
Okay, I just wanted to let you know that we'd like to start talking to Doug about getting, getting our ducks in a row to be ready.
Yes, very good.
I'm sure Doug has a laundry left to come.
Doug, I'm sure Doug, but I don't think Doug knows about, knew about this bond issue, do you? And I, I just finished writing the State League of Women Voters pros and cons, and it was very hard to write cons because, of course, my heart's with the library, but, you know, I did, I was honorable, put in the good things and the bad things.
Very good, anyone else want to pop, yeah?
Actually, one thing, some of you may know I programmed Cheryl with the friends there, so, you know, I'm partly responsible for some of the musical selections that we do, and therefore know that that men's room does not work well, so. Would really like to have that fixed, because it's really broken. The other reason, I just wanted to mention on the historic downtime walking tour, that one of our primary motivations, I forgot to say this before, was really to help the retailers down there by getting people down and around and, you know, being supportive and that kind of thing, so that had a lot to do with it.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone else from the public? Council?
Nope, I'll move the.
All right, I'm going to close the open session and move into closed session, we're going to discuss property acquisition. Ralph, you have your personnel matters? The contract information, we may come out on personnel matters.
I'll move.
All right, move back, Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Second, Mr. Youngblood, in all favor? Say aye.
All right.